Called the Coppa City Council Order, meeting eight to twelve, two thousand and fourteen. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Here.
Carol.
Here.
Kurzine.
President.
McManus.
Midnight.
Here.
And Mizell.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, we come tonight thanking you for the many blessings that you have given each and every one. We pray that you will be with our community, dear heavenly Father, for the ones that have lost loved ones and for the ones that are sick, dear heavenly Father, not only be with the sick, but be with the caregivers. Be with this meeting that each and every decision that we make will be for the better of the community. Be with our armed service personnel, not only on foreign ground, but here in the United States, guide and direct their lives, dear heavenly Father, and bring them safely home with their families. We ask your not precious name. Amen. Now, motion to approve the minutes of the last regular meeting, four twenty-eight fourteen.
I'm going to get a motion there.
Motion.
I have a second. I'm sorry, I have a question about that.
Okay.
I didn't need to be corrected.
All right.
On showing on April fourteenth, this was the minutes that were approved, and it's got me being absent. I may appear that way, but I was here.
I don't remember. I believe I remember what you did.
Thank you.
Was it just in that one?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
I'm so stipulated for that one correction.
Yes.
All right, Mizell.
And we did have a motion by Mr. Kurzine in the second, and Mr. McManus were in one stipulation.
I had to approve that before I turned, you know, that's worse.
Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
That's just one mother thing is trying to take away from that fourth ward.
Amen. We need protection over here, really.
Next item on the agenda, citizens' request. First, ladies, Ms. Sandy, Ms. Joan.
Hello. We represent Rebuilding Together. It's an nonprofit in Metropolis. I don't know if you've got a copy of the financial. Did you get that? Where it was our last, okay. It's our last year. Last year, our fiscal year ends June thirtieth. You can see that we renovated seven, six projects. All were in the city. Well, that wheelchair ramp was out of the city, but the other five were within the city. You can see that our expenditures were in excess of what our income was that year. We completely used up our funding, and this year our funding was significantly down. We were only able to do three houses. So we were here as a member of the organization to see if possibly the city could look into helping us with a grant for next year's project. We have a work day once a year. All our labor is voluntary. We take, there's no salaries.
What have you got in your mind? How much are you needing?
Well, our, the number of houses we do depends on how much our funding is. So it just, you know, we're open to however much we can get. The more, the more we get, the more house. And you can see kind of what we spend on a house.
And a lot of our homeowners have requested us to do like new roofs, and, you know, that takes a lot of money. So we weren't able to fix a lot of the homes on the roofs, so we had to do things that we had money to afford to do, to try to help their living a lot better.
All the repairs, this organization is for the health and safety, and so it's not cosmetic. We don't, you know, just paint something because they'd like it better. It's for health and safety. If a roof is leaking, we do a lot of wheelchair ramps. That's, we do a lot of that, and fixing broken plumbing. That's for safety reasons.
Well, it's something that, there's, there's nothing, of course, we're fixing to go into another budget year in July, and we'll just have to put in consideration for the next budget year, which we'll go into that.
Which is our next year, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Next item, Mr. Mike Jenna, Vice President of IMEA, to discuss electrical rates and energy cost trends. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman. Kind of correction, I'm not Vice President, I'm a Director, but.
Well, you just got a promotion.
I got the trophy.
Sorry, Mike, I did that.
That's okay. Rick asked me to come down and talk a little bit about residential electric rates. As everyone's aware, we had a really cold winter, and there's a lot of stuff going on in the electric industry that's affecting people's ability to pay bills, and people wanting to know how competitive electric rates are, and all things like that. In Illinois, the deregulated electric market for the Amherns and the Commonwealth Edison's are under the Illinois Commerce Commission jurisdiction, and the customers have the ability to buy through the Illinois Power Agency, or go through a default rate, or go on an hourly rate, or buy in the market. And the city council set the rates for the cities, and the co-op set their own rates. And if you go to the page two of this, we gave out, what we did was we went up to the residential utilities that we could find rate information on, and we took a typical customer. The typical customer uses about ten thousand kilowatt-hours a year. You've got some, some homes in Illinois that use a lot more than that because they've got electric heat, or they're huge houses, or things like that, and the rates that each utility charge, depending on what the customer shape is like, it depends on, you know, where you are on a pricing graph. So what we did is we said, we'll just look at the typical customers because that's what most of our customers are. And if you look at the chart, we've got, you've got, going from left to right, you've got low-end customers here on the left, and then go across the bottom, I've got Metropolis in the middle. You're in the middle, but you're basically on the low end of all the pricing for a typical customer. As you go up to the right, the price range is anywhere from about eight point two cents per kilowatt-hour up into about sixteen or seventeen cents a kilowatt-hour. Generally, the co-ops are higher priced because they've got a lot of rural lines. They've got a lot of expenses. In Illinois, the most competitive ones are the Amherns, and the Amherne rates are really good right now. There's a lot of things happening with the Amherne right now. They've got some people saying the rates are going through the roof, other people saying the rates are dropping. Same newspaper, depending on what day you've got, they're going up or down. If you look at the, the next page after that, this is kind of where our predictions are, where the rates are going. And if you see, the lower rates are heading upward, and some of the higher rates are going downward. And what's going on is, if you look at like, Amherne's filed some rate increases for the distribution portion of their rates. So they basically said the distribution portion rates are going to be climbing steadily. The transmission portion's going to be climbing steadily, and the market portion, some are saying it's going down, and some are saying it's going up. And what we're seeing on the market is, is the people that are on the market, they used to be able to buy electricity at about four cents a kilowatt-hour, and then you throw another four to five cents from the Amherne distribution. Well, the most recent re-ups on those, for the expired contracts, the four cents, we need the four-four and the four-eight, okay? Otherwise, you go to the default rate. The default rate was above four-eight, but we learned on the way down after we did our chart, the newspapers are saying the default rate is dropping. We don't know if the newspapers have it right, because we worship, a lot of it is saying it's counterintuitive, and transmission is going up, and capacity's going up, and that makes part of the default rate. But we don't see the auction results as done by the Illinois Commerce Commission, so we're going to wait to see when those things get posted. They posted the auction results for ComEd, and the ComEd auction results for the bundle rates went up, which is the opposite of what they're saying is going on for Amherne. And the newspaper's saying the Amherne bundled rate is four cents, whereas the ComEd is closer to eight cents. So we're going to kind of work our way through this, see if it's a small-time blurb. Some of the times they quote rates that are only good for four months, and then they change from there. We won't know until the Commerce Commission posts it on their website. Once they post it on our website, it'll be public data. We'll get to Rick, who's our board member, and he can distribute the information to you. But basically, to go to page four on this, we really feel right now the Metropolis pricing is going to be below the market in this upcoming year, because some of the things that aren't in that rate, when we compare like versus Amherne or ComEd or the others, the cities do some special things that they'll charge for. And so these are kind of added bonuses that the people get for their, for their, for their dollar. So when we compare like average cost per kilowatt-hour, eight point three, the cities generally do a lot more for that eight point three. First of all, you know, favorable line extension rates in Metropolis. If you get a customer, some of your customers have second feeds at no cost. Sometimes you'll come in and you'll change out transformers at no cost. Companies like Amherne and ComEd, they're regulated by the Illinois Commerce Commission, and they don't want them to give that, you know, to do that for economic development purposes. They've got other mechanisms for economic development. So stuff that you do for free and you don't charge for, Amhernes and Comeds and some of the other utilities charge for it, and then they got their, their average cost per kilowatt-hours. The city does not have what they call is a municipal utility tax per se, where a lot of the towns in Illinois have started paying five percent utility tax, which is on top of these rates that we talked about for, for the investor in utilities. You don't have a franchise fee assessment. If you get up closer to Chicago, some of the towns, they, there's an assessment of two to five percent that's up on top of this average cost per kilowatt-hour. The city does not charge that. You've also got locally, which not only do they do employment in town, but they help with their outage reduction times. We've got some towns that we, that are not behind our municipals, but if they have an outage, the crews are coming from like an hour away. And that, that basically means that their, their downtime is higher, and that's an economic impact, not so much for the residential. For the residential, it's an inconvenience, but if you've got like a grocery store and you're down for four hours, you may have to start throwing over goods and different things like that. Or if you're a restaurant and you're down for four hours, you may have lost your night's business. Also, the purchasing through the IMEA, we do a lot of purchasing through generation resources that are in southern part of the state and along the Ohio River, which helps the economy. We do have a participation in units in southern Illinois and participation in a coal mine in southern Illinois. Now, we talked about low prices in Illinois. Prices dropped suddenly back in two thousand and twelve, and part of it was the economy was, was really bad, and part of it was the natural, price of natural gas dropped. It was running at a six-dollar a gallon per decuperaate, and it dropped down to two dollars per decade for, for a short period of time. People were able to lock in gas, which gas has burned, sacrificed electricity, and that burned electricity back about two or three years ago. The price of natural gas was up closer to five dollars. I think today it's running about four fifty compared to that, too. So the price of electricity is up on an energy cost basis, which is going to affect the price going forward. As, as price goes forward, the city through the IMEA, we own some generation assets, and we have some contracts for generation assets. The people that are on the market, when they start closing down these power plants because of the EPA, that's going to affect the market price of electricity. And in northern Illinois, the market price for electricity is, as I said, it's in a higher track. It's been moving up a lot faster than down in southern Illinois. Because of the economics in southern Illinois, there's a lot of good things in the short term. It's going to be changing. We predict it's going to be changing around here in the next couple of years. You also, we talked about the generation stations in the southern Illinois. A lot of them are basically generating at cost to keep the plants open. They know the EPA's going to shut them down, so they're not reinvesting in baghouses or different equipment. They're just trying to keep these plants open as long as they can, and that's helped depress the prices. It's kind of like if you knew you're not going to, you're going to get rid of an automobile in six months, you're not going to say, well, hey, I'm going to rebuild the transmission. You're going to say, well, let's put a band-aid on this thing, and we'll pull it out when it comes. But back in the past, the residential energy compulsion in ComEd was running four to four and a half cents per KW in the kilowatt-hour in the spring of two thousand and twelve, and hit four to eight, four-five to four-eight in the summer. It's now running six point three to eight cents. On top of that, you throw in four or five cents for the distribution. So the ComEd portion, which is north of Interstate eighty, it's really shooting up. In southern Illinois, it hasn't been moving up that fast. It was at four cents. The bids we were seeing were going four-four to four-six. We saw in the paper that the IPA maybe selling electricity at four cents. If that's true, that's going to basically mean that a lot of these contracts tell them to exercise their ability to go back to the IPA, which if they all go back to the IPA, it's going to change the price from the IPA, because right now we feel that they probably have extra electricity that they bought at low prices, and they're selling at high prices, because all these people left them. Now, if they move back, they may be underpurchased, so that may mean, and we're, this conjecture may mean that they're going to have to buy at a higher price, which will raise their price. It's all supply and demand, and until the market hits equilibrium, we don't really know. But it'll start unfolding in the next couple of weeks. The other thing is the economy's coming back, and the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission is starting to examine some of the bids. We've got a lot of power plants in the Midwest that burn natural gas, and in the past, they've only burned natural gas to generate electricity in the summer, because that's when the air conditioning demand was. Well, now with coal plants going away, they're starting to have to burn, make electricity in the winter, and a lot of these units, quite a few of them, are on interruptible natural gas supply. And when the polar vortex hit, there was nine thousand three hundred megawatts of natural gas generation behind PJM that could not show up because they couldn't get natural gas. Now, nine thousand, if you look, the city of Springfield's like four hundred and fifty megawatts. So nine thousand is, gee, you're talking about twenty Springfields worth of electricity that was supposed to be there and was gone. The FERC's saying, hey, this, we can't do this. So they may start requiring, they have not, they've not made any rules, but they could start making rules, which will increase the price of electricity, because if the people have to get firm gas service, they're going to be paying more. We basically, we've got some employee to that, but nothing like what the market has. And the polar vortex, it's shown a lot of flaws in the system, but the system did work, and we're wondering what the polar vortex comes in a couple of years, if these coal plants gone, you know, what we're going to do. If you look on page seven, we basically, this is where the Amherne pricing for the municipal electric aggregation was going. If you look on the left, it was low going all the way through November two thousand and twelve, and through two thousand and fourteen, you know, it's, it's moved up considerably. If you go to page eight, the same things with the ComEd pricing for their bids. These are bids that are publicly announced. The cities have all posted them with the Illinois Commerce Commission. And then on page nine, we basically have a chart that Amherne's putting out to their investor on utilities, and it basically talks about their investments they're making, and that their, their rate bases are growing dramatically, and it talks about the worth of their rate base and their transmission rate base. Now, we'll let you look at those documents, and we don't make projections out, but it's pretty easy to figure out where you think they're going. Summary is, we asked the city, you know, basically tell them, say, your residential rates are very competitive for the typical customers. We ask you to be vigilant and to study the situation, watch the market, to make sure you're giving everybody a fair deal, and to make sure that you're reinvesting in your system, to make sure that the quality's there, your reliability stays up. And the final thing is, as the market prices rise, which we think they will, we were surprised to see this article in the paper, or that we heard about, about the IPA's price going down, but the price will be going up in the future, and your rates will look even better from there on out. With that, do you seem to have any questions or comments? It's, I know I've hit you with a whole lot of stuff, but if you, after the night of that question, if you're laying to Rick, we can get back to you, or, you know, give you a message by email or whatever.
What Mike was explaining, for example, with respect to like ComEd, if you take that six point three to eight cents that they're adding, that's the power cost. And as he said, you add four to five cents per KW to that for your, for your delivery, basically giving it to the house. So you wind up with a range of ten cents to thirteen cents kilowatt-hour. Ours last year was eight point six, that was our average residential rate based on surveys. So you were substantially below what a ComEd customer would pay. You were very competitive with what an Amherne customer would have paid. They would have paid in the eight point five to nine point five range, getting their power delivered. So, and we've always been substantially below the co-ops, too. So, I mean, you have, you've done a good job of maintaining a very competitive rate structure. The one thing, I think, why we talked about this before, that Mike points out, is that these things are kind of volatile out there. I mean, I mean, yeah, everybody got a, everybody got a really nice break that was in this, maybe in aggregation in two thousand and twelve, and in this winter, they got a real bad wake-up call. And, you know, the average person, that's a tough thing to, to, whatever they saved, they gave back in about one month's time this winter, so.
Well, there's people that are on hourly pricing, and that means they take whatever they commit, and they can go out a day ahead and get an indication of what the prices will be, and then they decide whether they want to, you know, do their laundry at a certain hour or, or what. And in certain hours, when the price was over, we talked about, you know, four cents a kilowatt-hour, certainly in hours, it was up to over a dollar kilowatt-hour, two dollars up at Chicago Lane. And the people that were on real-time pricing, they're still ahead of the game, but they gave away, they gave a lot of it back this winter. And, you know, it's, it's just, you know, people, a lot of people were surprised by these winter bills, but I'm from northern Illinois. I've got electric heat, and electric heat's good down to about thirty degrees, and it was down below zero for a couple of days straight. And my bill, which is normally, in January, typical January, I paid three hundred and twenty for water, sewer, and electric, because I'm electric. I was five twenty for that month, and the month before, I was up over a hundred to normal, the month after. But it's just, it wasn't the utility did it, you know, it was the weather did it to me. So, but the main thing is, it's volatile, you know. We know you've got good engineers that work for the city. They can monitor, you know, the situation, and, yeah, we're here to help you, too.
Well, and we're very fortunate, you know, that the people that preceded us had the benefit. To get into an organization like the IMEA many years ago, it's proven to be a good investment for city Metropolis and our residents, is it, it does fluctuate a little bit, but I think they're going to see a greater savings, like you said, in the next four or five years. I think it's really going to pay off. And one of the forerunners of that was Mr. Kurzine Senior, who was actually Mr. Manus back in eighty-nine, eighty-six. That actually was part of that program, and so we're getting ahead of the gang on our lines. Well, the IMEA is, I mean, they do this every day. So, I mean, they stay on top of it. They know what they're doing, and fortunately, we've had some great leaders in IMEA for the last several years. So I think it'll get better, and it's a good thing.
And you know our board president, I think, right?
Unfortunately, yeah. We agree with him sometime soon. And they have a great, they have a great bunch of people up there. I mean, and that's one thing I can say in each and one of you. I mean, you know, if we ever have a problem here, and we've experienced tornadoes, ice storms, and things like that, and I mean, it's, it comes pretty fast when we have a need within hours that helps here. So it's a great organization. If you want to be a part of us. Any other questions for Mike?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I guess I just wanted to, I'll just take just a quick second here. I've been contacted by a couple individuals about the Hope Light Foundation project. Can you give us an update on, on the progress on that, the financing, and where we're at today with that?
Well, it's scheduled to go up the twenty-eighth. And Matt Parker and Darrell Childers will be supervising that, and they'll have a crane there to lift it on the twenty-eighth. That's the plan today. The financing is in order. We have the money to pay for it, and then we need to sell a few more bricks. The bricks is what we need to sell. We need to sell a lot of bricks, but everything is going well. It's been a long time, but it's, it's in order now. Hopefully, we'll have it up to twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth of this month?
This month.
Okay. And so if somebody wants to buy bricks wherever they go, how do they go about doing that?
Yeah. No, what?
If somebody wanted to purchase bricks, how would they go about doing that? Can you give us information on that?
There's forms in the city hall. There's forms at the bank, or they can call me personally, and I'll get them to it. That's a form for a brick. We have a four-by-eight brick. We have an eight-by-eight brick. The four-by-eight brick is thirty-five dollars. A family eight-by-eight brick is seventy dollars. If it's a commercial brick with a logo on it, it's a hundred dollars. But just as you come in the door, there's, there's forms there still out for a brick. But I'd be glad to see if they get a brick if they just call.
Okay, thank you very much.
First item on the agenda, mayor's report. Ratify employment of Matt Holt and Darrell Kennedy, and if it's accessible, we will draw the Matt Kepner first on the work. Is that all right?
Yeah.
We've, we've approved all of them. We just wanted to ratify it at this meeting. So we have Matt Holt, Darrell Kennedy, and Matt Kepner. Matt went to work today, and Mr. Kennedy went, I guess all three of them went to work today, so.
I'm going to promote that we ratify the employment of those three individuals' names in a second.
Motion by Mr. Kurzine, second by Mr. McManus. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't think I have anything else to add to that. Corporate council report, Mr. Abrams.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first is a motion to suspend real estate, place the ordinance, authorize the sale of municipal real estate. If you recall, we went to bid on that. Mike Siders submitted the only bid at fifty-one hundred dollars, which we opened at the last city council meeting, and.
I'm going to put in motion. Say. Number?
Fifteen. And McManus, right?
What was it, fifteen? Yes. We do have a motion. We do have a second discussion. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we pass ordinance twenty fourteen dash fifteen as presented.
Say. We do have a motion by Mr. Midnight in a second, by Mr. McManus. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
The last thing I had, we mentioned this in a committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we'll be working on this some more. Our, this year, we are eligible to pay off, if you will, our existing bond debt. You prepaid, if you will. And so we had a meeting, treasurer and Tricia and myself briefly with the folks from Stiefel Nicholas Stiefel, if you remember. They were our underwriters. They're the investment bankers that helped us through our bond issue originally. And they came down, and they thought there may be some opportunities for us to look at that and save some money with the life of the, current life of the bonds. The, but before they could really give us any detailed information on that, we needed to do a, it'll, well, it's kind of like a memorandum of understanding, which the law requires be done. The mayor took care of that last week and with them, and they'll be down, I think, next, I think, a week from this Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken, to sit down and start gathering some of the information, so they can come back and have a presentation to you all about some possible opportunities we might have if we want to look at refinancing that debt that would reduce our cost of that debt and save us some money. I, I'm reluctant to say an amount, because we don't owe a few of them yet, and till they give us, I don't speculate, but at least the early numbers look positive. So that's, we just, I just want to give you a heads up that they'll probably be coming in and talking to us, and in the near future, you'll see a report from them.
Now, is that the bonds as far as?
That's, that's the, yes, that's the TIF bond issue that we did when we built the substation and all that work that was done, and all the property that was acquired along the riverfront, and, gosh, got a fire truck, finished down the fire station, whole lot of stuff.
Now, is this, you said, as far as this refinancing, is, are we going to look at that, or are we going to look at trying to pay it, or what's the news talking about? Just to refinance it.
Okay. Yeah, we were looking at refinancing it, which could reduce the amount of your payments on, on an annual basis. Just like if you refinanced your house. payments on an annual basis, just like if you refinanced your house and dropped your payment, you know, a hundred dollars a month or something, it's the same type of principle, basically. The.
Looks very good right now, too, because of the reassessed value of the taxes on the properties down there, which would recoup part of that loss in taxes, so.
That's all I have.
Committee meeting reports. Industrial committee, Mr. Midnight.
It looks like we're gonna be busy here, but actually, what we've got here are the first readings of four ordinances. They're dealing with annexations of Thomas Burnham and Shannon Burns property, so I simply bring these as first reading presentations at this time. So, if there are any, well, actually, there's four of them actually have first reading. The first two deal with the annexation, and the second two have to deal with the tax increment financing proposal for this project area. So, these are just first readings, unless somebody has a specific question, we will read those up as first readings. Okay, we do have one item, though, I'd like to just briefly explain. We've discussed in the past the concept of putting the old gas company building up for sale on bids, and we have seen some interest in this property. And so, at this point, what we would need is simply to authorize the mayor, Mr. Abel, somebody, to publish in the paper. Now, Mr. Abel, what's the official, we have to publish in the face of the paper how many times?
Three times.
Three times?
Yeah.
Before we can accept bids for this?
Yeah, you have to, you have to publish a notice in the paper that you're accepting bids, and then by ordinance, when you go to accept a bid, you have to accept the bid by ordinance adopted by two-thirds vote of the corporate authorities. Okay, so six of the nine would vote in favor for it to pass, just like the one, that's what this one we did with Mr. Siders. So, you have to authorize us to seek bids with a motion, and then, now, if there's anything in particular you want in the bid, like in his, in this case, on this particular property, you set a minimum bid on what you would accept. Now, the only other thing that we'll probably have to do, is when we do publish the notice in the paper, we have to have a legal description that we can use. Before we get a legal description, we're probably gonna have to get a survey, because it's gonna be parts of it. Those are lots, okay, lots and partial lots up there. We're not gonna sell it all off, okay? We're gonna keep, right, access to the Fonsit Hut Top Building or Metal Building back there, and we're gonna leave some behind where it was torn off for part of the, I think, but I can't just draw a legal description of that without having it drawn out by a survey.
We didn't really sign a legal, a minimum bid.
I think that's what you did.
And we're, we're gonna be discussing this, we're gonna be discussing this further at Wednesday, maybe.
But my understanding that we needed to approve this tonight, so you could get something in the paper.
Yeah.
Is that not true?
Well, we won't be able to get it in.
Till next week.
I will, I will, I promise, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be able to develop a legal description, I don't think, without a survey, okay? So, and that's gotta go into the paper. So, the best we can do is, maybe next week or the week after would be the earliest that we could get it in the paper, I would think.
And these folks that.
The week after, we, we're gonna have another council meeting first.
We'll have another council meeting for that.
There may be a potential, maybe there's a potential to lease the building, short-term, whilst the paperwork's being worked on and we're presented, okay, you may have some that if you want to lease this short-term.
I think that's kind of on the schedule for him.
Okay.
Well, anyway, make the motion proceed on that, so they get it done, if you do get that before next council meeting, then you're already ready to go.
Okay.
And that's one reason we put it on, or even know, knowing that we're going to be discussing this particular item on Wednesday, you know, a couple of, and, and, and just give it some thought and stuff like that. The parties that's actually interested in it are in, in, in business now, they just don't have any room. So, they're very interested in the building, and I actually had a meeting week before last, I had another meeting with them last Thursday, maybe Friday, I didn't know what day it was, and they have shown great interest in purchasing the building, or, short-term, like Mr. Abel said, they would be willing to a monthly, or a three-month lease or something like that, with the unders, you know, they would love to have been in that building by the Superman celebration. Now, I don't know, you know, what they're willing to do or how they're willing to do it, and we've actually, the conversations I had, I mean, I've, I've told them, we're not willing to put a lot of money into that building, it is what it is, and if we're willing to take at a discount price for it, that's gonna give them some leverage of being able to put some money into that building and still have a super-nice square-foot building with a minimum amount of things that they're gonna have to do to get in that business, you know, so we just need to think about it, you know, the model, what we can do, or how we want to do it.
I think they made most of the proceedings, that way you can go ahead and.
Was it by Mr. McManus?
No, I'll second it as far as that goes.
And Mr. Mizell?
Have they already, as far as asked for a lease, or have they, just to get into the building before?
We haven't discussed price or anything like that. Probably what I'll have to do first is actually take them up there, now, they've, they've looked at the building, but they need to get inside that building and actually look to see what they would have to do to turn the lights on. I mean, it doesn't have air in there, I know, but it does have furnaces and stuff like that, and they do work, you know, who knows if they work.
Will you have an opportunity to do that before Wednesday, do you think?
I actually called today and didn't get a, a call, but I will call first thing in the morning and see if I can't get them up there to see, you know.
I mean, that would help us a lot.
Get an idea of what, you know, the rent, what, what they're willing to pay for the lease.
That would be a big help for us Wednesday.
And, you know, if you leased it for two or three months, that'd give them ample time to get all the paperwork and everything, that they won't have a lot of money invested in it, but they don't know for sure they're gonna get it either.
But if they, in other words, they already want the building.
Yes.
It actually went as far as they had a meeting with their banker, because they were refinancing their house to see if they could, that's not gonna happen, I mean, it's just not enough time.
Right.
Please second that motion.
Mr. Mizell.
Since we had a second, we can discuss it. The agenda says motion to discuss old gas building. You don't say nothing about getting appraisals and this and that and everything else, it says discuss, that means to talk about, right?
Yep.
I don't think that this motion is in, is in order. Honestly, I mean.
Well, can we give him authorization to proceed without a motion, give him authorization to lease in the paper?
I think we can proceed without a motion.
Without, without a motion.
Well, I mean, the motion, it's a motion to discuss, that means to converse.
This was actually put on there to make the council aware of what's going on. We don't have to make it aware, we can just proceed.
That's fine, I'm just saying that I don't, don't see that where we can legally do so.
I would draw mine in, and give, give the cable authorization to proceed.
Yeah, we'll, one thing we can do going forward here, the mayor and I talked about this last week, was, because this would allow us to get some of the stuff done, maybe for a sale, the idea of a lease or a rental arrangement, it only takes a majority vote to do any, give the mayor authority to do that, up to two years, okay, so certainly a month, a month, for not to exceed two years, we can put that on a, on a council agenda and get that whipped out, that would let them move forward, because it may take a little while at the serving, at the legal description. And I don't have to have an exact legal description for a lease like that, as we would for a sale, and it goes in the paper, okay? It'll make it easier anyway, then, really.
It won't make it any harder.
You make some money, you get the building cleaned up.
You counted it, yeah, yeah. Worst case scenario.
If, you know, if they, if it proceeded, Superman Celebration is the second weekend in June, it might give them enough time to get in there, straighten it up. Would they have to have air conditioning? We know they don't need any heat to make a few bucks and see what it is, you know.
Especially if they're interested in buying it.
They're interested in buying it, and, and the price that we talked about was the price that we had discussed with the other people up there, with no guarantees that that's what it would be, but in the, in a ballgame, and, and they were very acceptable of that, and I believe at that price there, I believe you can go to your local loan institution, I believe you can leverage it for the loan, so.
Well, back off it, that's, that's become a very good building out there, Maxon.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a corner lot, it's, it's, has ample parking, you know.
It's got potential.
And it would put something that is actually productive in that block there to get them on down the street. And what seems to be right now in, in the growing is the playables and cheap new type things and, and stuff like that, so, you know, maybe the best thing for the uptown district right there now is, you know, if you could get enough of those kind of shops that would actually take enough time for people to come for a day trip, you know, or maybe two or three days or whatever, but it is, it is something that seems like there's a lot of interest, there's a lot of people up there now, so hopefully, we can make something happen here.
Okay, that's all I have, Mayor.
Having nothing else in the industrial, apartment heads.
All right. Nothing at this time.
Old business. New business.
I have one item, Mayor, the tourism committee will be here tomorrow, eleven o'clock in December.
That'll be Tuesday. All right, sir?
Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Walsh, if possible, to give us a report on the sewer separation, what it has done for the waste treatment plant. Then flow and so forth. Is it too early to do that, Mr. Walsh?
It's probably too early, but. Sewer separation, you know, we only took three tenths of an inch of rain, we're taking cause CSO event, and at present time, will take almost seven tenths of time, it depends on how hard the rain comes.
And how short.
And how fast it comes, you know, it's all, what we do realize, though, is the events are a lot shorter than they used to be. And that is due to the amount of flow that's diverted to the river, plus the new inflow pumps we have, so, you know, we can't tell difference.
I think it'd be interesting to know how much water is going in the river now that don't go through the plant, when that is available.
CSO sheet, website's gathered on it right now, Mr. Carroll. Every time we have a CSO event, I'll report it, and it goes on the city's website, the CSO section.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else under new business? Miscellaneous reports. Financial report, payment of salary, payroll, and contract bills.
One second.
Call and roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Kurzine?
No.
McManus?
Yes.
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
Payment of miscellaneous bills.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Call and roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Kurzine?
No.
McManus?
Yes.
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you have a name, sir?
Can we go into executive session and discuss threatening and pending litigation for American? I'll make that a motion.
You know something we don't know?
I don't know. But I don't want to ask out in open council.
What's your motion again?
To go into executive session to discuss threatening or pending litigation.
All right. Call and roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Kurzine?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?